Uh, City Council meeting on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I wish you ran it over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll?
Yes, Mayor Corm is present for the City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
Public comment, any members of the public, or in the library lecture hall, I believe, that want to ad- to address the council remotely by phone, would call this number, eight-eight-eight-two-five-one-two-nine-four-nine, or two-one-five-eight-six-one-zero-six-nine-four. And with this specific access code for today, March eighth, six-six-five-two-nine-two-five, pound, wait three seconds, and press pound again. First, we'll check the, uh, library lecture hall. Are there, it looks like there are no, oh, there is one person waiting. Sir, please, give us your comment.
Okay, Mr. Butts, I have a problem with the housing protection. You say that I call and talk to the lady, and I don't get along with this woman at all.
Sir, sir, is this on the, uh, agenda right now?
Yeah, uh, housing protection.
Okay, go right ahead now. Do you have a problem with housing protection?
Housing protection, yes, I do. You, she told me if I don't register my units, that she's gonna call my tenants and tell them they don't have to pay rent. What does this city council think they have the authority to cancel rent just because I don't register my units?
Okay, so-
Can you tell me what does you constitutional authority to do that? You don't, you know you don't have it, you know it's unconstitutional, but you're gonna do it anyways.
Sir?
Yeah.
I, I think we have some confusion, and, uh, and, and what I, what I need you to do is leave your phone number for that good-looking gentleman that's standing there next to you, your name and your phone number, and someone will call you, will work this out. But I do wanna let people know that we extended the deadline to register from, uh, from January, from October, excuse me, from January seventh to March thirty-first. And if you register by then, you won't have to make a payment. However, in April, you will have to pay the regular fees.
I'm not gonna pay anything.
But, but let's, sir?
I'm not gonna pay, listen, I'm not gonna pay you anything, I'm not gonna register my units, I don't have any-
Sir?
Any of my units that are current, what are you gonna do? Listen, listen, all I gotta say, what are you gonna do if I don't register my units? Tell me what, what's this city council gonna do?
Sir, we don't, we don't, we don't wanna be antagonistic with you.
We do, we do, because-
We, we really don't.
You guys are abusing your authority, it's unconstitutional, and you know it!
Sir, sir?
Butts, Butts-
Sir, could you give your name and number to the gentleman, and we'd have somebody from Housing Protection call you?
Don't have that, don't, don't have that, what's her name, uh? She's already lied to me, she-
Oh, I, I don't think anybody lied to you, sir.
Oh, yes, she did, I got proof she did.
Sir?
Yeah.
Sir, let's try it again, let's, let's do that, let's, let's give, let's give us one more-
Just answer me one question, what are you gonna do if I don't register my units?
It, it'll be, it won't be good, sir, sir.
Well, what do you, well, what do you mean it won't be good?
Sir, sir.
You can't make a mess of me, because-
Sir?
It's ex post facto.
Sir?
You know it's unconstitutional, and yet you're gonna do it anyway.
Sir, we don't wanna do anything unconstitutional to you.
Yeah, you do too, you don't care about the Constitution.
That's not true, sir.
It is true!
Okay.
When you gonna have live meetings, when you gonna open City Hall back up?
When we feel that it's safe, sir.
It is safe!
Sir, you're here, you're here really making yourself known, we can see you, you can see us.
I know, and I wanna make myself known, because I want you to come after me for not registering my units, so we can have a, so we can have a, a court case.
Okay, we really don't wanna do that, but-
I do, I do.
I do, well, sir? Let me ask you this, sir, what's your name?
Greg Essery.
Oh, Greg, spell your last name.
E-S-R-Y.
P-S?
E-S-R-Y. Edward Sam Robert Yellow.
Okay, and his first name is Greg?
Gregory, yeah.
Okay, Gregory, what's your phone number? Five-nine-one-oh, five-nine-one-oh. Either I'll call you-
Okay.
Or Ms. Yekima Decatur, the, uh-
No, 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 Ms. Decatur, no. We do not get along.
Uh-oh, okay.
We do not get along.
Okay, okay, well, we'll, we'll talk.
All right, all right, Mr. Decatur.
We'll talk, all right?
All right.
All right, thank you for coming, appreciate it. Yeah, okay, now, operator, do we have any callers?
No, Mary, we do not have any callers.
Okay, with that, we'll close, um, public comment. And, uh, we'll go to, it looks like DR one.
Yes, Mayor, staff report recommending adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Council and all other legislative bodies of the city to continue to conduct public meetings via teleconference from March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two through April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two pursuant to Assembly Bill three-six-one.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, item one, CSA one, and H one.
Warrant register.
Approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
City Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye, Madam Clerk, what's this next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider approval of the revised draft, two thousand and twenty consolidated annual performance evaluation report for fiscal year two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-one for re-submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Has the notice of the hearing been given in the time, form, and manner as required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Mayor notice has been given, and an affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received on the matter?
Yes, Mayor, communications have been received and passed out to Mayor and Council.
Is there a staff report on the matter?
Yes, Mr. Roberto Chavez, HUD manager, will give the staff report.
Mr. Chavez, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the council and members of the public, so nice to see everyone's face now. Yes, the recommendation is that you conduct a public hearing today and, uh, take, uh, public comment, uh, plu- approve the revised draft, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one consolidated annual performance evaluation report for submission to HUD. If City Council will recall, in December, uh, they, we submitted the, um, CAPER report, and since then, HUD has, um, responded and requested that we update some, some descriptions in the CAPER report and make it a little more clear in the notification, uh, of the commenting period for this report. With that, I, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
One more, one second. Are there any comments from the public? Um, operator, are there any callers?
We do have two callers, yes.
Go right ahead, and, and just reminding you callers, this is on the public hearing, on the CAFR.
Okay, moving on to our first caller. And caller, your line is now unmuted.
Hi, first of all, I was on the line at the beginning, um, during the public comment section, I did press pound. The operator did say, um, that my hand has been raised, however, I was not called upon so that I could speak. Um, so I wanna speak on that first, but I also have something to say about this public hearing, uh, item PH one.
Right ahead.
First of all, uh, I second, I second Mr. Essery's motion. Um, I do believe that, um, you guys should not, um, approve this resolution. So considering the fact that less than a month ago, the city held the Super Bowl here, uh, the largest event in the entire country, attracting over one hundred thousand people who did not wear masks. The city council members who attended did not wear masks. We had the taste of Inglewood, no one wore masks, none of the city council members or the mayor wore masks. In fact, the mayor and all of the city council members and everybody that's sitting up in there right now do not have on masks, nor are you guys even socially distanced. Um, so it seems pretty clear that there are no longer, that there is no longer a need, uh, to have masks or to keep the public out of the city council meetings or city buildings. Um, the city council also does not, um, yeah, you guys aren't even cooperating with these rules yourself. Um, so I'm asking-
Okay, Ms. Dixon? Ms. Dixon, Ms. Ms. No, I'm going to, Ms. Dixon, right now, I'm giving you, I'm giving you back, I'm giving you back time to speak, three minutes on agenda items. You can speak on odom- open items at the end of the meeting, so I'm going back and allowing you to spit-
This is on DR one, this was on DR one, the City Attorney's Office, um, recommending that you approve the resolution to keep the community from attending the city council meetings, that's what I was just speaking on. You know, you guys are saying that there's a health emergency, and that's why we are not allowed in, yet none of you guys are socially distanced, none of you guys have on masks, so it's pretty clear that you're hiding behind the guise of a health emergency to keep the public out. And that is what we have an issue with.
Okay.
And I'll go on to the second part, um, I did submit questions to you guys for PH one. Uh, Mayor Butts, did you receive it?
Actually, this is your time to ask your questions during your time, you have three minutes, go right ahead.
I understand, I'm asking, did you submit, did you receive the questions that I-
I saw your question, but that's not-
Okay, so let's ask them publicly as, as well, Mayor Butts, and hopefully the public can get some answers. So according to the two thousand and twenty-one CAPER draft, um, the city was allocated one million eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars in CB BG CV funds for the purposes of rent relief during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, I wanna know how much money is left, and when the remaining money will be dispersed to the residents who have filed the necessary paperwork and recertification. Um, also, on page twelve of your report, Mayor Butts, um, it states that one million sixty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars has been allotted for rental assistance, with ninety-one percent of those funds being depleted. However, it also says that only seventy-three households were assisted. So I was wondering if you guys could provide an itemized list of the payments that would disperse those seventy-three-
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, here, here's, here's, it's not how we run a council meeting. Now, if you wanted a quick answer, uh, within your three minutes, then Mr. Chav-
I mean, if you have the answer, press the button.
Ma'am, ma'am, Mr. Chavez is gonna, is gonna answer your question. Go ahead and answer your question, Mr. Chavez.
Okay, well, I have seven of them, and I know that you-
Well, you don't have time for that, of course, you know you don't have time for that.
Thank you, caller.
Well, I submitted it to you, and there, there are very-
Okay, you're, you're, you're at time, ma'am.
And if you guys already-
Operator, operator, she's at time. Whew, so anyway, of, of the one point eight million, and just real quick, um, you know, how many people have been helped? And, and our plans for, to continue to try and, uh, will make awards from these funds?
Sure, so if you, uh, recall, a lot of, um, the payments that have gone out are, are dependent on landlords and tenants participating and providing the documents that the city needs to process a payment. Um, as of today's date, this is a rough approximation, about three hundred thousand dollars has been, uh, sent out to landlords and tenants for the rental assistance program. The people that are on the list are being assisted, and as they provide all the necessary documents, we're able to, uh, issue those payments for those, those landlords and tenants.
Okay, so i- it's a matter of process, is that right? I mean, we can have the funds, but people have to get into the process, provide the documents, because we have to ensure there's not fraud, and we have to ensure that people that put in for the funds are qualified to receive them. And so then it becomes, we become dependent on people, um, applying and submitting their documents, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, operator, next caller.
Moving on to our next caller. And caller, your line is now unmuted.
Yes, um, I'm, I, I would like to speak with, um, uh, Mr. Chavez, he was just on, he's with the housing. Um, I have, um, I wanted to know, I, I've been hearing all sorts of, uh, things that's coming from newspapers and everything and about the HUD program with the, uh, uh, money that has been, uh, you know, that came to you, to, uh, the city of Inglewood for rent, um, release, relief, and also, uh, that they had, um, I have called down there, I've come down there when, when we were open to come in there, and I've been told that there wasn't any, any, you have to be on a, uh, uh, fill out, uh, not fill out an application, there was no money one time, then another time they told me that, uh, I just missed the deadline of, of filling out the form. Then I called, I called just before I came on this line and spoke with, uh, uh, one of the advisors, housing advisor, and I would like to know, uh, all of this information that's, that's on, that's in the newspaper, that's on here telling us about, uh, Inglewood for, uh, uh, our rent relief, that thirty-five hun- thirty-five thousand-
Ma'am?
Pardon me?
Ma'am, oh, well, you, go ahead, you have a minute twenty-six, we got the clock working, go right ahead, ma'am.
Okay, well, uh, thirty-five, uh, what was it, thirty-five was from, um, Biden, and then, uh, a million was given, and then the last total they gave me was two hundred and forty-four, not three hundred thousand that was, has been given out to them. When I went down there, I've been on a waitlist since two thousand and nineteen for, and I just spoke with the advisor, and, um, I, since two thousand and nineteen, but it's a separate list from the, from that. I wasn't informed about the COVID-nineteen rent, um, uh, uh, relief. So, uh, otherwise, I would have filled out an application, I'm a senior citizen, and, um, uh, to help with, with my rent. Um, I, I wanted to find out all the information that I possibly can, and who do I talk to, Mayor Butts, so I can find out how, how and when, and I can go about taking care of that.
Okay, so Mr. Chavez is gonna give you a name and number of someone to call right now, are you ready to copy it?
Okay, yes, sir.
Please call, uh, area code three-one-zero-four-one-two-eight-eight-one-two, and you'll get some answers there.
Eight-eight-one-two, okay, and who, who's at that number, what is this, housing?
That is my li- my direct line.
Oh, okay, hop, okay, thank you, Mr. Chavez.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, operator, next caller.
So at this time, there are no more callers.
All right, thank you, with that, we'll close, um, public comment, um, if there are no council comments, uh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, the revised draft, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, the consent calendar, items two through four.
Thank you.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, SPH one.
Staff report recommending that a public hearing be set to extend the interim ordinance adopted on February one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Set the public hearing for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at two P M. And receive and file the report pertaining to the establishment of a permanent short-term rental ordinance in the city of Inglewood. A one.
Thank you, Mayor, we had a closed session regarding the bargaining group's negotiations. As to that, a discussion was held with the city council and direction given to staff. As to A two, there's no oral reports from the city attorney's office.
CM one.
Thank you, Mayor, there are no oral reports from the city manager's office.
CC one, City Clerk.
Thank you, sir, uh, would, um, would like to wish all of our women a, a happy International Women's Day. We are beautiful, we are brave, smart, lovable, kind, and so much more. Uh, be reminded that we are enough and always will be. I would like to remind our residents that we will have our third redistricting public hearing uh, next week, March the fifteenth, at two o'clock P M. Please remember that all of your draft maps are due by March the tenth, which is tomorrow, at ten o'clock A M. Also, I would like to remind our residents that, yes, we do have a special primary election happening on April the fifth. It is for the State Assembly District sixty-two. Thank you, Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, the housing authorities in session, H two.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution awarding twenty-nine project-based vouchers to Good Shepherd Homes Preservation L.P. for the project located at five-one-two Centinela Avenue, Inglewood, California nine-zero-three-zero-two.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Excuse me, Mayor, let me, um, retract that. Housing Authority members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourned housing authority, there are no appointments to, uh, boards, commissions, committees. Public comment regarding other matters. If anyone wants to discuss any item that, um, is related to city functions, they may do, may do so now for one minute. Sir, in the library lecture hall, come forward. Oh, can we go back to the library lecture hall? There we go, can you hear me, sir? Hmm, we'll try it again.
I can't hear him.
I, I know we can't hear him, I know he can hear us.
Good afternoon, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are, go right ahead, sir.
Excellent. I wanted to ask, uh, what would be the proper method to arrange a meeting with my team of, of experts? I wanna see about placing solar systems on city buildings like the, the public library, you know, other, other, uh, you know, county buil- city buildings, uh, that could benefit from that. I understand that California is going to be pushing towards clean energy, you know, renewable energy, uh, by two thousand and forty-five, as, you know, stated by the, the governor. And I know there's like the halfway mark where they wanna get to, you know, about fifty percent, uh, clean renewable energy by, I think, uh, twenty, twenty-twenty-five, I believe it was. And I spoke with the library manager here at the Inglewood Public Library. She mentioned that that's something that they wanna move toward, so I just wanna know who I can contact for that.
Okay, the, the best, uh, department to contact is Public Works. The, uh, Assistant City Manager and Public Works Director is Louis Atwell. And so if you call and ask for Louis Atwell, you'll be directed to the appropriate person to discuss your project.
Okay, Louis Atwell, Public Works, thank you, uh, his title, Assistant?
Uh, uh, I'm afraid-
He's Assistant City-
He's Assistant City Manager and Public Works Director.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, operator, are there any callers?
At this time, Mayor, there are no callers.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Uh, council comments, Councilman Dotson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Councilman- Council Fogg, and the mayor and I attended a re- reevaluation of, actually, the redoing of the Aldo Bassel Call Court at Rogers Park this past Sunday. I wanted to thank HBO for the renovation, which was done in conjunction with, um, Winning Time and David Flores. The Winning Time is a, I guess, a, a synopsis of the re- the rise of the Lakers dynasty. So it's gonna be on HBO, if you have HBO, it'll be a whole series, so, uh, please tune in. Uh, with that, I'd like to wish all the women International Women's Day, uh, and enjoy. With that, thank you very much, and everybody have a blessed day.
Okay, Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor, just, uh, reminder for those folks that signed up for the pet vaccination clinic, that's this, uh, Sunday at the District Two Community Center from nine to twelve. If you did not get a chance to sign up, 'cause I know folks have been calling my office and inquiring for the next one, uh, we sh- we will try to have a date for the next one, um, at next Tuesday's council meeting. So just be patient, I know people are waiting for that. And, uh, we'll be doing a shredding, uh, event as folks are getting closer to getting all your paperwork together from your taxes. You're gonna run into papers you no longer need, so we'll be providing a shredding service, courtesy of Republic Services. Uh, they'll be putting that together for us again at the District Two Community Center, date and time to follow. Uh, that being said, have a great week, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fogg, District Four.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, um, just want to wish everyone a happy Women's Day today, and then also announce that, uh, Crenshaw Imperial will be having an event for the kids. It will happen this- It will happen this Saturday, March 12. I believe it starts at 11 a.m. It should be a fun event for the family, so check that out if you're looking for something to do on Saturday. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
All right, Councilman Morales, District 3.
I'm good this week, Mayor. Just thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Okay. So we're going to continue for a few weeks to open up the library lecture hall. I thought he said that there wasn't... Okay, operator, is there another caller?
Mayor, at this time, there are no callers.
Okay. Okay.
Do they call in the appropriate number?
Let's... I know. Let's announce it one more time, because we want to give everybody a chance to call in. If you're trying to call in, here's the number that you call. or 215-861-0694. The access code is 665-2925. Press pound, wait three seconds, and press pound again. Well, everybody else could get in. So I think that there may be some mischievousness afoot.
I think we'll make a note of it, Mayor.
So just take a note of it, but I... Everyone else is able to call in. All right, so thank you. So anyway, we'll go back to me. I really do want to thank HBO for the beautiful job they did on the court at Rogers Park. And I was just taking note, over the past couple years, we've had Dwight Howard and his group redo the basketball courts at Edward Vincent Park. We had Nike redo the courts at Darby Park. The Dodgers nonprofit redid the baseball field at Darby Park. Another nonprofit associated with the Dodgers and Jackie Robinson Foundation redid the baseball court at Rogers Park. The city redid the tennis courts at Edward Vincent. We added a football field and soccer fields with artificial turf at Edward Vincent Park. And I just wanted to thank all of the newfound partners of the city. And I want to compliment Public Works and the city and Parks and Rec for the full-scale efforts that have been made to totally rehabilitate our recreational facilities for our children. Very proud that our primary focus, in the midst of all of our progress, has not forgotten and focused on our children. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the over $18 million that was poured into the old security bank building to make it the L.A. Philharmonic Youth Orchestra L.A. program home. And I want to thank, again, the Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles for leaving a lease in Marina Del Rey to buy a headquarters here in the City of Inglewood. And with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.